We had the council here, so let's just go. All right? All right, call this meeting to order at 4:00 of 6:38. Invocation, we're going to invite Kay Wilson Bolton to the podium, please. And if we could ask everybody to please stand.
Mr. Mayor and city staff and esteemed council members, thank you. I'll be praying in the Christian tradition. I am so sorry, I don't speak Spanish, so hopefully they'll sense my heart as I pray. Hey, my Father, how we thank you for a community that looks like ours. Where people at all levels of our community and all passions and perspectives can come together to share responsibility for good things. And God, as the world is in so much turmoil, I hardly know how to pray about it except your will be done and that you put your covering over people who are suffering. Help us to be thoughtful about all of our words when we comment about issues. Help us to be kind as we listen to the perspective of others and to really listen and learn. And I thank you for a city council that does that. Thank you for a community that embraces cultures and opportunities for housing and for business growth. Lord, it all adds to a community that speaks of health. We love you and we thank you that you provided this season of some sorrow and yet joy. And we ask that you help us to be good stewards of the community services that you've given to us. Help us to be good neighbors and friends and speak blessing over all that come our way. And I pray in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you very much. We're going to have Vice Mayor lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Feel free to join in the pledge of allegiance and of your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with all due circumstances.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Just a reminder to please turn off your cell phones this evening. We'll be conducting the people's business. And again, this is Easter week, so happy Easter to those that celebrate Easter. We're going to go into our roll call. City Clerk?
Testing. Councilmember Crossway?
Here.
Councilmember Cortneyo?
Here.
Councilmember Ornelas?
Here.
Vice Mayor Juarez?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here.
All present.
Great. Close session report.
Yes.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, city council recessed into closed session to discuss four items. Items discussed this evening were not completed and council reconvene following the open session. The items that were completed were conference with labor negotiators, this is item 4B on the special agenda pursuant to government code 54957.6 with city representatives, chief labor negotiator Irma Rodriguez Moisa, city manager Dan Singer, financial director Kristi Ramirez, human resources specialist Lorena Alvarez, and the following employee organizations: Community Services Officer Association, Mid Management Association, Professional and Supervisory Association, Service Employee International Union, Local 721, Santa Paula Police Officers Association, and unrepresented employees, which include executive management, confidential employees, and part-time employees. There are no actions taken tonight.
Great. Thank you so much, City Attorney. We are moving on to our public comments section. We have three public comments. This is an opportunity to speak to the council, up to three minutes on issues that are not already on the agenda. And we're going to invite our first guest tonight, who has his own translation, Trino Lopez. Trino, por favor.
Buenas noches, alcalde.
Buenas noches. Si puede hablar más cerca del micrófono, por favor?
Me llamo Trino y soy residente de Santa Paula hace mucho tiempo del Consejo de 400 Home Par Asociación, líderes de causa. El grupo de organización comunitaria que ayuda a la gente sencilla a convertirse en líderes y a trabajar, ganar en temas que mejoren a nuestra comunidad. Soy católico, así que la Biblia tiene un significado para mí. En Corintias 12:25, 26 dice: "Para que no haya divisiones en el cuerpo, sino que sus miembros se proponen los unos por los otros. Igual si una parte sufre, todos sufren con ella. Si una parte es honrada, todos se alegran." Para mí estas palabras se traducen en la forma que causa, enfoca su trabajo para mí. Estas palabras significan que la organización comunitaria no consiste solo en abordar problemas locales, sino también construir relaciones sólidas y fomentar crecimiento dentro de un grupo diverso que inclina hacia la justicia, la equidad, la gracia. Es un grupo no solo gente unida. Ese grupo somos nosotros, el pueblo y el gobierno local, la comunidad, los cargos electos, los residentes y los funcionarios que trabajan en el ayuntamiento. Estamos juntos en esto porque todos tenemos importantes intereses en común. Queremos que Santa Paula sea mejor ciudad. Puede ser, todos somos parte de un cuerpo de Santa Paula y debemos trabajar juntos para prosperar. Cuando una de ese cuerpo sufre, el otro, el otra parte también sufre. Nosotros, los residentes en 400 Craig Mover Homer Par estamos sufriendo. 164 unidades residentes recibieron un aumento alquiler de 45. Ese es un tipo de enfermedad que todos, el cuerpo de Santa Paula, debemos trabajar juntos para expulsar. Si no pasa, nosotros pronto nos pasará a todos infectados. Nuestros, nuestra ciudad en forma que ya no podemos controlar. Es, es, es por eso que hemos venido ante ustedes esta noche para pedir tres cosas, señor Jaime. Por favor, niegue la solicitud para el aumento de 45 de renta. Segunda, miembros del Consejo de la Ciudad, ustedes son parte del proceso apelación para aumentos de renta. Si llega ante ustedes apelación, queremos que se pongan de lado de nosotros, los residentes de Santa Paula. Y tercera, queremos asegurarnos de que la ciudad prohíba la expulsión del control de la renta en toda la ciudad, así como trabajamos sobre la resistencia climática, la segur, la seguridad pública y la cuestión de la juventud. Gracias, mis hermanos y hermanas de Santa Paula. Ha sido un privilegio hablar frente a ustedes esta noche.
Muchas gracias, señor, por estar aquí.
I will typically translate for Trino. My name is Trino Lopez. I'm a longtime resident of Santa Paula, a board member of the 400 Mobile Home Park Association and a leader of CAWS, the community organizing group that helps everyday people become leaders and work and win on issues that make our communities better. I'm Catholic, so the Bible has meaning to me. In Corinthians 12:25, 26, it says: "So that there should be no division in the body, but that its parts should have equal concern for each other. If one part suffers, every part suffers with it. If one part is honored, every part rejoices." To me, these words translate to the way CAWS approaches its work. To me, these words mean that community organizing is not just about addressing local issues, but also about building stronger relationships and encouraging growth within a diverse group that leans towards justice, fairness, and grace. That group is not just the people united. That group is us, the people and the local government, the community and its elected officials, the residents and the civil servants who work tirelessly at the city. We are in this together because we all have an important self-interest in common. We want Santa Paula to be the best city it can be. We are all part of the Santa Paula body, and we must work together to thrive. When one part of that body is hurting, the other part suffers with it as well. We, the residents of the 400 Mobile Home Park, are hurting. 164 units received a 45% rent increase. That's a type of disease that the entire body of Santa Paula should work together to expel. If it happens to us, it will soon happen to all of us. Infecting our city in ways we will no longer be able to control. That is why we have come before you tonight to ask three things. Number one, Mr. James Mason, please deny the request for the 45% rent increase. Number two, members of the city council, you are part of the appeals process for the rent increase. If it comes before you on appeal, we want you to side with us, Santa Paula residents. And number three, we want to make sure that the city prioritizes expanding rent control citywide, as well as work on climate resilience, public safety, and youth issues. Thank you, my brothers and sisters of Santa Paula. It has been a privilege to talk in front of you tonight. Trino Lopez.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, our next speaker this evening is Tiffany Orr. Please come to the podium. Thank you, Tiffany.
Good evening, city council. My name is Tiffany Orr, and I am a lifelong resident of Santa Paula. I was born at Santa Paula Hospital. I am a Cardinal through and through, and a proud graduate of Santa Paula High School in 1990. I live in the 400 mobile estates for 33 years. And have been part of the community, of the same community of the Mobile Home Park since I was six years old, when my great-grandmother, who lived there, when it was a senior park. With the help of my mother, my husband and I purchased the mobile home that we live in now. My mother said she wanted to invest in something that will help our family thrive, and that the mobile, and that was the mobile home. And the investment did just that. I was just, I was able to raise two beautiful girls there in, can only be described as a close-knit village, where people look out for each other and the kids play together, happy and safe. Unfortunately, the new owners of the out-of-town investors who purchased the property six months ago have asked the kids, the city, to allow the increase of 45%. My husband and my youngest daughter are both disabled. We live on a fixed income. We are stretching every dollar and doing everything we can to make it work. 45% increase on a fixed income would surely impact my family in Santa Paula. Life is getting more expensive, and the money that most of us barely get to keep us, our heads afloat. It is important to note that we, the residents, have to pay for all upkeep of the mobile home and the spaces that we, that we are on. That means we are responsible for the landscaping of our spaces, as well as the painting, the plumbing, the electrical, the sewage. The proposed 45% increase will be in addition to the expenses in the upkeep of the home and the green spaces around. I am here today to ask for three things of the city. First, James Mason, we kindly ask you, yet steadfastly, that you reject this request of 45% rent increase. Second, I want to talk a bit about the process. In a few weeks, we will speak in front of the Mobile Home Rent Control Commission. The decision that they make on the 45% rent increase may get appealed. And you, the council, who are here, who hears the appeal, and I ask you to side with the tenants for this purpose. For we are not pulling together as a city and watching out for one another, who will? As we build up and advise our city, let us remember not to forget the working-class Santa Paulans, like myself and the my wonderful neighbors. And lastly, I would like to ask the city council to begin to consider reviewing the current mobile home rent control ordinance and reduce its cap to 3%, sometimes a little bit more reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Orr. And our next speaker will be Victor Partida. Victor?
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Miembros of the Consilio de Santa Paula. My petition is the following, and I'm going to begin like this. Hola. Mi nombre es Victor Partida. He vivido en el parque de casas móviles en 400 Craig Drive for nineteen, for 19 años, perdón. Pero mi familia y yo hemos vivido, hemos sido residentes de Santa Paula for más de 19 años. Antes de venir a Santa Paula, viviamos en South Central Los Angeles. Siempre estaré agradecido con la ciudad de Santa Paula por uno de los regalos más grandes que me ha dado: la paz. La paz es algo que damos por sentado todos los días, pero es algo que tenemos en abundancia aquí en nuestra gran ciudad. Es por eso que hoy, que estoy aquí hoy, para hablar de la paz que se obtiene de tener una casa que se puede pagar. Nuestro parque de casas móviles es un gran lugar para vivir y un, un gran lugar para crear una familia. Es un verdadero reflejo de Santa Paula en su conjunto. Estoy orgulloso de haber trabajado para la misma empresa durante casi 30 años, Barnett Tool and Engineering in Ventura. Ese trabajo me ha ayudado a poner comida en la mesa para mi familia, ropa en sus espaldas, y libros escolares en sus mochilas cuando iban a las escuelas locales de Santa Paula. Un aumento de alquiler de 45% tendría un impacto negativo en nuestra calidad de vida. Alteraría esa paz, significa menos de todo. Significaría un nivel de vida más bajo e impactaría negativamente en nuestra calidad de vida. Todos ustedes son mis hermanos y hermanas, porque aquí en Santa Paula todos somos familia. Así que me, me siento obligado a pedir tres cosas muy importantes de ustedes hoy. Número uno, señor James Mason, por favor, niegue la solicitud del propietario para un aumento del 45%. Número dos, a mis hermanas y hermanas del Consejo de la Ciudad, si nuestro asunto llega ante ustedes en la peleación, por favor, recuerden ponerse de lado de su familia, de lado de su gente. Y número tres, pido que la ciudad, todo el personal y los concejales, por favor, consideren priorizar la expansión del control de renta para toda la ciudad. Mejorar nuestra ordenanza de control de renta de casas móviles y comprometerse a trabajar con los residentes en otros temas importantes, como empleos locales, mejores calles y vecindades bien iluminadas, mejores protocolos de respuesta de emergencia, resiliencia climatológica. Gracias.
Muchas gracias.
I will translate for Victor. Hello, my name is Victor Partida. I have lived in the Mobile Home Park at 400 Craig Drive for 19 years, but my family and I have been Santa Paula residents for over 27 years. Before coming to Santa Paula, we lived in South Central Los Angeles. I will always be thankful to the city of Santa Paula for one of the greatest gifts I have ever been given: peace. Peace is something we take for granted every day, but it is something we have in abundance here in our great city. That's why I'm here today, to talk about the peace you get from having a home you can afford. Our Mobile Home Park is a great place to live and a great place to raise a family. It is a true reflection of Santa Paula as a whole. I am proud to have worked for the same company for almost 30 years, Barnett Tool and Engineering in Ventura. That job has helped me put food on the table for my family, clothes on their backs, and school books in their bags as they went to local Santa Paula schools. A 45% rent increase would have a negative impact on our quality of life. It would disrupt that peace. It would mean less everything. It would mean a lower standard of living and negatively impact our quality of life. You are all my brothers and sisters, because here in Santa Paula, we are all family. So I feel compelled to ask three very important things to you today. Number one, Mr. James Mason, please deny the owner's request for a 45% rent increase. Number two, to my city council brothers and sisters, if our issue comes before you on appeal, please remember to side with your family, to side with the people. And as my, and number three, I ask that the city, all staff and elected officials, please consider prioritizing expanding rent control for the entire city. Make our mobile home rent control ordinance better and commit to working with residents on other important issues like local jobs, better streets, and well-lit neighborhoods, better emergency response protocols, climate resilience, and issues that benefit the youth of our great and fabulous city. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. Let us stand together and make sure that nothing disrupts the gift of peace given to us by our great city. Thank you. Victor Partida.
Thank you very much. All right, we are moving on to the next item of the agenda, presentations, item 7A. I'm going to invite this young man, along with a few guests and his family, to please come to the podium. Mr. Lorenzo Veloz, I see you in the back over there, and his parents, please come up, as well as Megan Batista and Marlene Batista and Megan Escobar, who are also here. Lorenzo, welcome to City Hall.
Thank you for having me.
Can you share with us what you have there? You can put it on the table.
This is my science project that I did for my eighth-grade science fair. It is about, I call it the Eco Hero. It's about a edible water bottle that is biodegradable and eco-safe, and it's called the Oho Orm. And my main, my main question about it was, what amount of sodium alginate, which is like brown algae, would make it last the longest? And my hypothesis was a little over the average amount would make it last the longest and make it more durable. My, sorry. My three variables were, my independent variable, the amount of sodium alginate I used, my dependent variable was the amount of dips I did into the mixture of sodium alginate and calcium chloride. My control variable was the amount of water and the amount of calcium chloride I did, which is how much I didn't change or how much I did change. Through my project, I did my trials. My three amounts I used was three grams, five grams, and seven grams. My trial one, for my three grams, the first one lasted about four weeks. For trial two, it lasted three and a half weeks, and for trial three, it lasted four, four and a half weeks. For my average amount, which was five grams, the trial one lasted five weeks, trial two lasted five and a half weeks, and trial three lasted five weeks. For trial three, or my, for my third experiment, which was the little over average amount, which was seven grams, trial one lasted six and a half weeks, trial two lasted six weeks, and trial three also lasted five weeks. My conclusion is, my hypothesis was correct. Seven grams of sodium alginate did make it last the longest with the, with the extending six and a half weeks. I guess because since I thought I had more sodium alginate, it lasts a lot longer and be lasting a lot more durable. To my understanding, sodium alginate, the more time, the more sodium alginate I use, the more time it took to fall apart. Some things I would change is, I would study more how this can help our ecosystem even more, and what other appliances we can use to make it easier. What I did was, I got all my supplies, which was my sodium alginate, my calcium chloride, I had water, I had got my bowl for each of them, and then I had my mixing whisk and a spoon to scoop each one into each other to make it into the protection orb. What I did was, with the calcium chloride, you get the sodium alginate first, and then mix it with the water, and then dip it in calcium chloride to make it a solid form. And after that, you play, I placed it in a container to make sure it would just be safe, and every day I would check up on it to see if it would break or anything. After that, every hour or every day, I would check on them if they fall apart or not. And even I was at home, or if I was at school, as soon as I got home, I would check my experiment. My, my two websites I used was earth911.com, and then I also used sustainablereview.com. These are my graphs and everything I showed. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
In recognition, in recognition of achieving first place, ladies and gentlemen, in the Junior Division for Environmental Engineering at the Ventura County Science Fair, presented by the Ventura County Office of Education. We're so proud of you as a city council and your city for your wonderful accomplishment for representing, and we'd like to acknowledge not only yourself, but the community around you that supports you. So Megan Escobar, I believe, is your teacher. Is she here? Oh, she wasn't able to make it. And we do have the principal of MUPU School here, Ms. Marlene Batista. Thank you so much for your accomplishments this evening, and I do know that there's something magical happening at MUPU School, because we had several winners. And I'm going to ask your principal to take these certificates back to Kathy Espinoza and Eli Gonzalez, who play second and third as well. And so, congratulations. Thank you for coming to City Hall, enlightening us about your project, and we're hoping to see you as a future engineer for the city or in another space that you so choose. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Future is bright. Great public speaker there, huh? Next on the agenda, we have a really extraordinary recognition for someone who has served this city with distinction. We'd like to invite the chief, and we have a certificate as well, and... We'd like to invite the chief, and we have a certificate as well, and... All right, chief. So I'm going to start by just reading this proclamation, and raise your hand if you're here to support Mr. Quinlan. What an accomplishment and what an achievement. Throughout your career, you consistently demonstrated dedication by volunteering at numerous crime scenes, traffic collisions, canine training sessions, and demonstrations, as well as community engagement events such as cruise night. I, Pedro Chavez, Mayor for the City of Santa Paula, and on behalf of the city council and the community of Santa Paula, praise and recognize William Quinlan Jr. for your, since nineteen, December of nineteen ninety-nine until today, thank you again for your service and dedication to the residents and the families served by our police department. Mr. Quinlan?
My name is William Quinlan, and I am very proud to have worked with the city for the last twenty-five years, and I learned a lot, and I worked with a lot of great officers and a lot of different chiefs. So I want to thank you all. It's a great community, and I hate to be leaving it, but I'm moving to Minnesota, so...
Well, thank you again. I know that the council is so appreciative of all your efforts, and I know the council would like to say a few words, Mr. Quinlan. Okay. Well, we do have something special. We'll do all the awards, and we'll go up and take a picture after this, but you do get something very special. You join a family of distinguished individuals who receive the city tile for your service and dedication. So we will present this to you there as well.
Thank you.
And then, we have something even more special.
Good evening, council, vice mayor, mayor, city staff, and all of our audience. This is a special moment for all of us. As you know, volunteerism is a common thread in this wonderful community, and the police department over the years has been no exception to great volunteerisms such as Bill. We've had a robust citizen patrol, reserve officers over the years, which have made a legacy of this department and how it contributes to the community. So I have up here with me tonight several of our department members who have worked with him. We have reserve officers, Brad Talent, Reserve Officer Mark Knatchey, retired Sergeant Jimmy Fagada, my commander Cody Madison is here. We also have our volunteers who are part of what Bill has been a part of for all this time. Pete Duff, who is still a volunteer with us at thirty-one years, Martha Brown, twenty-eight years. It's an amazing accomplishment what these people continue to do. And I remember working with Bill last year at cruise nights. He was out there giving it his best and what he believed was right for this community, and I appreciate, we all appreciate you, Bill, for, for working with us all of these years. So we have this special shadow box, which has a commemorative one-hundred year of the centennial Police Department coin, your volunteer badge, which is shaped in the letter of a V, that you wore proudly for, since nineteen ninety-nine, and all three of our Santa Paula Police Department patches in our history, and your name in a sewn embroidered cloth tag that you will represent you as you have worn for all of these years. So I want to thank you for that. This does not go unnoticed. We're honored, I am honored to be here tonight to celebrate you. We thank you for all of your volunteers' work, as well as all of our volunteers. We have volunteers that are explorers, explorer advisors, and other reserve officers, everybody. So it's awesome to be able to recognize you tonight. Thank you for all your work. We appreciate, we appreciate all of volunteerism with the Santa Paula Police Department. So this goes to you. Congratulations. One other word he has, really quick here, from the National Association of Citizen on Patrol, another certificate of his twenty-six years. We were founding members of this organization in nineteen ninety-four, and it continues today. So we appreciate that, and Mark, do you have something else to give to that family member and his...
I do. Behind every great volunteer, behind every police officer and everything, is the family behind them, especially spouses, for putting up with the knocks on the doors, the phone calls in the middle of the night. So, Susie, thank you very much.
Mayor?
We're going to take a photo, so you're going to stand right in the middle because you are the guest of honor, and your wife, please join us as well. We're all going to hold all your wonderful awards, and the city will miss you.
Retired Sergeant Jimmy Fagada wanted to come up and pay one last tribute as a partner to you for so many years.
Thank you, council mayor, vice mayor, city council, city manager, everybody. I want to thank you for allowing this to happen tonight. I was honored to be the citizen patrol coordinator from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand nineteen. Got to meet a lot of great people. Folks, you don't know who these people are or what they do, but we had people that were retired from working at the Pentagon for the Joint Chiefs of Staff, one of our volunteers.
Retired Sergeant Jimmy Fagada wanted to come up and...
He was in the military, and he was one of the guys that used to go load plutonium and nuclear bombs to protect our country, and he's here making a, you know, still volunteering after thirty-one years. That's the type of people that we had on our citizen patrol team. Bill, and there's an acronym, he used to say, you're a jack, you know, master of jack-of-all-trades and a master of none. I can say this guy was a master because there's nothing that this guy couldn't complete. After about six months of being on city, or being on citizen patrol, he was made the team captain in charge of the unit. He's been there since and still today. So one thing that I want to say to Bill, you know, when police work, you notice the badge on his shadow box. It's a V, for, the V means volunteer. And the citizen patrol, our dispatch would call them Victor units, acronym for volunteer. So Bill's call sign was Victor Thirteen. Everybody knew him. Nobody knew him by Bill, William, Billy, which he hates that name, but he was, he was always, he was always Victor Thirteen. Everybody knew when Victor Thirteen was available on the radio and ready for callouts. And, but the thing about, one thing that, in police work, when you retire, you know, there's always a sign off, and that means you're done. You're, you're official. Like when I retired, you know, they said my call, last call sign was Sam One, and they said Sam One is officially ten-seven. Well, tonight I get the honor of, for Bill to hang that, Victor Thirteen is officially ten-seven.
We have some words for our, by our vice mayor.
Well, Bill, I had the opportunity to work with Bill. He started in December of nineteen ninety-nine, and I was still working with the police department, and we got to work together for another ten years together. He not only worked for me, but worked with me because he worked side by side with you wherever he's at, wherever he's needed. He never says no. Like you said, Susie probably got woken up many times during the night when he got called out to come work in accident or crime scene, or, or any time of volunteer effort, including cruise night. We don't remember what year it was, but I'm sure he got the plaque, and you were also recognized as volunteer of the year one year. So congratulations for that. After I retired, you continued to stay working, and you worked at Weatherford for a long time. One thing that wasn't mentioned was, through your contacts at Weatherford, you got a card donated to Citizen Patrol through Weatherford. So another cost savings and your contacts in the community. We can't say enough about your volunteerism with the city, and, but it doesn't end there. You know, you're also a member of the Odd Fellows. In fact, there's several of them here tonight. And I want to mention that our clock tower went silent for many, many years, and we couldn't find anybody to fix it. Well, we got the clock fixed, but then we needed to fix the striking mechanism, so P-Bid, Private Business Improvement District, helped pay for it. But this man right here, every time you hear the clock ring, he's the reason for it. He got it working again. And we have a little secret. Whenever we hear the clock ring, we always say, "Thank you, Bill." So when you're around town, you hear that clock, just kind of yell out or say, "Thank you, Bill," and I'm sure he'll hear it. But no, thank you for that, Bill. You, you've made that happen. And then another thing, for those of you that come and see our train display every December, it's been going on for eighteen years, nineteen years, and since Wes Easly has left us, Bill has become the primary construction and one of the chief engineers. And even though he's going to Minnesota, he's going to fly back every year to help us with the train display. So again, you know, a lot of people run away when you say, "Do you want to volunteer?" Bill runs towards volunteerism. So on behalf of, I think I speak on behalf of the council and the people of the city, Bill, thank you so much for all the things you've done over the years, and Jimmy stole my thunder because I was going to say Victor Thirteen is ten-seven, but he already did it, so, but thank you very much, Bill.
Even when they changed my call sign to four Victor Seventy-two, everybody still came on the radio and said, "Victor Thirteen will be transporting this." Never left.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, for that opportunity.
Absolutely. I'm going to jump, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Crosswhite, and followed by Councilmember Corneo.
Real brief, because I know that you have other things to, we need to move on to, but I just want to say, the, the, what... It's okay. I, I just want to say, you know, it's, it's a loss for the municipal government, but it's a loss for the city, and you will be, you will be truly missed. You are a, just a genuinely wonderful human being. You have done so much for so many people in this community, you know, helping people have access to their homes. Just, anyway, I just really want to thank you for everything you have done to contribute to making this community such a wonderful place to live, and we will love to visit you when you come back to visit, and your new community is very lucky to have you. So we wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Mr. Quinlan, we are, we wish you well as you move on to Minnesota, where I have a lot of relatives, and so now I know why you're coming out in the wintertime to work on the trains. Minnesota's a wonderful place also, but our, our small town here is better for the service that you've given us, and, and we're safer, and we are exceedingly grateful to you, and we wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Miss Santa Paula too. It's a very little town.
All right, dinner time, right? Toast. We are going to jump real quick while we deal with something to Agenda Item 7D, Fair Housing Month, and is Rebecca Elliott in the room? Rebecca Elliott? Is Gwen Tran? As well as Winnie Davis? I see you, Winnie. You're going to join the podium. And we've jumped to Item 7D. We'll come back as soon as we're done with this item to 7C, which is the Art Culture and Creativity Month Proclamation.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us today. My name is Gwen Tran. I am the current resident for Asian Association Realtor of America in Ventura County. We are one of the eighteen thousand members, it's forty-three chapter across America to Canada, and we are a small group of Asian Association Realtors here in Ventura County. We, we still are very baby chapter in the last five years, and we are very honored for you guys in Santa Paula, as well as Ventura County, to recognize us. Our mission is on, focus on Asian and as well minority groups, homeowner affordable, and on housing, we're trying to get people dream come true. Thank you, and we are honored to be here today.
Thank you. Please remain on the podium. I'm also going to invite Kay Wilson Bolton, who's here in the audience, who is our local real estate queen. And I believe you have a guest today.
I do. I am very happy to introduce James Holden. He's our new executive with the Ventura County Coastal Association of Realtors. We had to go all the way to Tennessee to find him, so James, welcome officially, but I'm happy for him to be here. So, am I on?
You're on.
Okay. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the city of Santa Paula, for this proclamation. On behalf of the Ventura County Coastal Association of Realtors, I'm Kay Wilson Bolton, past VCCAR president, and I'm honored to be here on behalf of everyone to accept this. This month, and it's timely that we are here tonight based upon what we've heard from our friends in the Mobile Home Park, we commemorate the fifty-sixth anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act, landmark legislation that reaffirms our collective commitment to equal housing opportunities for all. The Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight was passed shortly after the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., highlighting its significance in the civil rights movement. Over the years, it has been amended to expand protections, including the addition of gender in nineteen seventy-four, and protections for individuals with disabilities and families in nineteen eighty-eight. Fair housing is more than a law. It's a fundamental value. At VCCAR and my colleagues, our members work every day to uphold the principles of fairness, inclusion, and opportunity. These principles are firmly rooted in the Realtor Code of Ethics, which we are proud to uphold. The very definition of fairness is impartial and just treatment, or behavior without favoritism or discrimination. This code requires every Realtor to provide equal professional service to all clients and customers, whether they are buyers, sellers, or tenants, and to actively promote practices that ensure dignity and fairness in housing. We know that a home is more than four walls. It's the foundation for stability, success, and community. You heard some of that tonight, and that's at all price points. That foundation must be available to everyone without exception. Our state association has an aggressive professional standards committee to ensure its members are in compliance. This month, we're not only celebrating these values, we are actively engaging our communities around them. On April the twenty-third, VCCAR is proud to host a Fair Housing Forum right here in Santa Paula at the Ag Museum from eleven-thirty a.m. to three p.m., and you can sign up for a seat on the city's website. This free event will bring together housing advocates, community leaders, legal experts, and real estate professionals to talk about the challenges we face and the solutions we can build together. It's an opportunity for learning. Reservations are on the city's website, and we've had to increase the food order twice because of the attendance increase over time. So thank you for allowing us this time to talk to you about the importance of fairness at all price points in our community, buyers, sellers, and tenants. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Now therefore, I, Pedro Chavez, Mayor...
Now therefore, I, Pedro Chavez, Mayor of the City of Santa Paula, to hereby resolve that April 2025 to be proclaimed as Fair Housing Month and call upon residents, property owners, housing providers, real estate practitioners, and government agencies to, one, support the principles of fair housing by promoting inclusive practices and eliminating discriminatory practices in all areas of housing. Two, encourage education and awareness about the Fair Housing Act and its protections. Three, promote policies and programs that ensure affordable, accessible housing opportunities for all, especially for historically marginalized and underrepresented communities. Four, commit to a vision of equal opportunity where every individual has access to safe, affordable, and accessible housing in a community free of discrimination. Let us stand united in our commitment to creating housing opportunities that foster equity, inclusion, and justice for all. Thank you so much for being here to the organizations that work in the front lines. I will presenting the proclamation to the two agencies. So I will come to the front.
Next up, we're going to invite the Arte en Cultura Collective of Santa Paula. And if we can have their representative and the members who are here tonight to please join us at the podium. You know, and I normally read the proclamation, but today I actually feel that it's best to hear directly from you about the collaborative. This is an opportunity to educate the community about the amazing work in bringing arts and culture together in our community. So if you would like to say a few words before I present this to you?
Greetings, everybody. I really wasn't prepared to say anything, so hello. This is Santa Paula Arte en Cultura, some of our board members. I'm the president, vice president Tracy, and members at large all around me here. We are really excited to know that we're going to be embracing even more art and culture here in town by this proclamation. It's really exciting to hear about this. And what we are striving to do is to bring to light the art that we already have here and the community that we have that's budding artists as well, that we want to support them and bring it out to everybody to see and engage everybody in the community with what we can do.
Tracy, you want to add? Tracy, you want to?
Yeah, thank you. And we're so proud of, to partner with all of you and your vision, putting arts and culture and entertainment in, in the, in the plan and the vision for, for celebrating and strengthening the community. And we are joining cities and counties across the state and celebrating Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. So thank you for the opportunity to partner and to help realize and manifest the love and pride that all of you and all the folks in this room have for our city through sharing and giving access to arts, culture, and creativity.
Well, on behalf of the city council, we appreciate you did have voices represented at our recent strategic planning session. And we're just so happy that this collective is growing and really showcasing what we have to offer here in our community in terms of our arts and culture and the creativity and imagination that happens here because we have these spaces for us to grow and develop together. So with that said, we're proclaiming Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month for the month of April. I will go out down there for a photo, and then we are going to take a, a quick photo and then thank you again for your service. And we're looking forward to having you come back and share with us exciting opportunities, events that you're, that you're doing. And just a reminder, we have a space where you can, any event you have, you can post, you can give to us, and we can post it on our website. We're trying to do a better job in making sure we have a one place where people know where they can go for all of the amazing events that take place.
Let's go on to Agenda Item 8. We are going to start with Councilmember Crossway.
It has been, I've been busy since the last time I saw you all. So at our Southern California Association of Governments Regional Council meeting, we had a presentation on zero emissions truck infrastructure, which was very interesting. But the bigger item is that I was voted by the Regional Council to be recommended to the SCAG General Assembly on May 1st to be second vice president of the Southern California Association of Governments. So that, that will happen at their General Assembly, but the Regional Council votes to make the recommendation to the General Assembly. So that happened. And then our, at the Energy and the Environment Committee meeting, we had a presentation on safety elements and how cities are going back, and even if they have a safety element, how they're making updates, both to incorporate the new CAL FIRE maps, but also, you know, looking to see if they have, are addressing all of the issues like extreme heat, you know, looking at their evacuation routes. And then the City of Arcadia talked specifically about their process, and they found that they needed to make changes to both their hazard mitigation plan and their safety element because there's supposed to be consistency with the two elements. And they found that there were inconsistencies in their two elements. And so that presentation was really good. And then at my Legislative Communications and Membership Committee for SCAG this morning, or yesterday, I guess that was yesterday morning, we did have a couple of bills that we're recommending that the Regional Council support that I wanted to bring here. There was a whole list of them, but there were two that I wanted to share with you all. One is AB 888, which is Calderon's bill. And that bill is establishing, there, she wants to establish and exist, a source of funding that will be dedicated for what they're calling California Safe Home Grant Program that would be essentially home hardening and defensible space funding because right now there isn't a dedicated source of funding for that. It would be an additional source of funding. I don't want to get into all the details, but it's looking at an existing source of funding that at the, if it's not used, it just gets put into the general fund. And so she's trying to capture that to, to fund specifically this program, which is really needed. And then the other, oh, yeah, and then it, we didn't know at the point, we decided to go ahead and support it. We don't know if there'll be any opposition or support. It was too, too early in the process, but I think it is one to watch. The other bill that is also supported by League of California Cities is AB 1131, which is on congregate care housing units and getting at least 15% of those units to count towards your regional housing needs assessment numbers. Because currently, congregate care units don't count toward your housing goals. And so if this bill were to pass, you would be able to count those towards your, your housing numbers. And I believe those are specific to, I think it's focused on seniors, but I didn't, I don't seem to have written that note down. At the Clean Power Alliance meeting, we learned that they're working on adding resilience assessment. I had previously mentioned that they have an energy team program where they'll go, go around and you set up a video call and you, you know, go around and they give you recommendations for energy efficient things that you can do. The program is free. And so the, and then it pairs those things with sources of funding to help you implement them should you choose. You're not required to implement anything, but it is a free program. They want to add to that program, and so it's going to be adding a resilience assessment. So you can sign up to do a resilience assessment along with the energy team. Usually you could do one or the other or both. It hasn't launched yet, so I will let you guys know when it does launch. But it would allow, it would be a free tool that residents could sign up to get an assessment of, you know, around their property, are there things that they could do to be more resilient? So that is something that will be coming. They also are increasing the incentive program that they have, the financial incentive for adding battery storage to homes that are in areas for high wildfire risk and frequent public safety power shut-off events. And that's at least 45% of the customers in the Clean Power Alliance region that fit into those categories. So that will be something that will also be starting up. So if anyone is, is, you know, I know we had a lot of residents that were impacted by power shut-offs, a lot of those were also in these same areas. So if folks are interested in adding battery, backup battery, it's something to look into. The Councilmember Cornejo and I had another Peoples Place Funding Proposal Meeting, and we're not quite ready to tell you all the outcome of that, but we're very close, I think, to being able to come back and let you all know where we're at. They wanted to circle back around to Peoples before we made a public announcement of what our assessment is. I also, the mayor and I had our Economic Development Committee meeting. We took a deep dive into sales tax and are continuing to kind of figure out where, where we're going to, what recommendations we might bring back to the council in terms of economic development. The, at our Ventura County Local Area Formation Commission meeting this morning, we heard a presentation from the Ojai Valley Sanitation District, who is looking to get some state planning money in order to expand to serve, there's several communities along the Ventura River that are currently not served by any sanitation system other than septic, septic tanks. And so they're looking to do a study of expanding to include those communities. They still have a long road ahead, but they're starting the conversation to see what it would take to build out the infrastructure in a way that wouldn't burden the ratepayers with the cost of that service. We also looked at the draft budget. And I know our finance director isn't here, but city manager can pass on to the finance director. There's just a modest increase in what our assessment will be for LAFCO for next year. So right now, it's $11,567, and it will be going up to $12,884. And part of the, if you look over the last several years, our assessment has gone up more rapidly than in other areas, and a lot of that is because the way the state formula calculates your, how much each entity has to pay is based on overall revenue, which includes pass-throughs. So we don't get hit as, as bad as Cuyagus Water District because they have all of the, the funding related to, oh my gosh, why can't I think of the Metropolitan? So they have a bunch of Metropolitan Water funding that goes through their agency, which means they end up paying a really large assessment compared to anyone else in the system. But that's the way that the state formula is set up. We also had a presentation, and it was something that maybe at some point we might want to refresh around the updates in the law, on the Levine Act, which is where the disclosure and, so they, they, the basic pieces are they've increased the threshold from 250 to $500 for the disclosure rate and also recusal or give back. But it's a whole big complicated, they're, they're still feeling their way into how that all gets played out. And so there have been changes since we, I think we originally talked about it a little bit when it first came out, but there have been some changes and updates. So anyway, it might be something at some point, just a good reminder. There also is a requirement that all of the applicants, hence, whether it's for a contract or a consultant or anything like that, that they're all made aware of the changes in the state law. At the Ventura County Transportation Meeting, we learned that the Sesbee Creek Bridge will hopefully start construction this summer. That's the railroad bridge that was washed out a couple of years ago in the storms. So they're hoping to be able to construct that this summer. They've been having the same sort of permitting challenges that we've been having, although theirs isn't going to take quite as long as our bridge took to get all of its permits. We also approved the draft budget, and we learned that, which I can't remember if, I think it was there, between that and my legislative meeting, one of the two, we learned that the state is going to try to do cap and trade reauthorization by the end of this year. They have until 2030 to figure it out, but they're really feeling like they want to get that figured out sooner rather than later. So there is a push to have those negotiations go forward this year, so that's something for us to watch. And then just a couple of fun things. Thank you to staff for coordinating the Easter egg hunt and activities at Teague Park. It was really fun. Some of us got a picture with the Easter bunny, and the, the kids were so cute, running around and chasing eggs, especially the little ones. And then we attended the Youth Apprenticeship Readiness Accelerator graduation, also known as YARA, and just a great group of young folks who are trying to figure out what they're going to do in the world, and they came out with a bunch of certificate, certs, certifications that will make them more employable. And our Santa Paula veterans also sponsored them with a bag of tools. And so they have a great tool bag and tools to take forth into whatever they, they go to next. So it was a great ceremony. And then I also, along with some of my colleagues, attended the Rocket Bin's ribbon cutting on Main Street, which is, some, some businesses were envious at the line that stretched from the front door and up the block. And they're always, if you go by and you don't see anything that sparks your fancy, there's always new inventory coming in. So maybe the next time, there'll be something, but it was very interesting. So I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Leslie Cornejo.
Thank you, Mayor. I did cross paths with Councilmember Crossway and other members of the council at a number of these events that were already mentioned. Again, attended the Ad Hoc Committee with the Peoples Place, as Councilmember Crossway mentioned. Information coming soon on that, or getting close. And because of that meeting, I missed part of the P-Bid meeting this time, but did go in and catch up a little bit on that, which reminds me, they've been involved and have been informed along the way with the new design and the new trash cans that we have around the city. And I don't know if any of you have noticed them, but I think they look great. And I did want to ask Director Barnes, do you recall how many of those we have, or do city manager, and how, how far along we are in installing all of those?
We have 44 or 45 of them. And... And I think installation is largely complete. I don't know if Mr. Goodman knows, but there's
See who here there.
Maybe about a half dozen I've seen that still need to be.
And we do have more than we had before. So there will be more trash cans out there, which should help keep our streets, city streets cleaner. So get a chance to pay attention to one as you walk by. I think they're really cool. I love the design. Again, the YARA graduation, again, youth apprenticeship readiness accelerator was, was just wonderful, seeing these young people with their new skills and employable skills. And again, I talked to the veterans and the VFW and I said, okay, you're helping fund this as well. So I, when I look for places to donate, I think I'm going to donate to the Veterans Fund because they're helping the YARA program. I think it's a great synergy. They're great believers in the program. And I appreciate staff for doing so much to, to carry along this program as well. And I was unable to attend the VRSD meeting, but my alternate was able to, Councilmember Anyway, little distraction there. So I appreciate that. And then I just wish everyone here and in the community that are observing Easter and Passover or have holidays now that they just have a wonderful holiday this week. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Justice, Councilmember Ornelas, your turn.
All right. I did attend, like Councilmember Cornejo said, I did attend a meeting for her. It was for the Ventura Regional Sanitation District. I'm not even going to pretend to say I knew anything about it before because I didn't. I didn't, had no idea how to get there, no idea anything.
It's a learning curve, I promise you.
But everybody was very kind, very straightforward what was talked about. It was very interesting to hear the concerns that they were addressing at this meeting was, I can share, right? Malibu Bay Contract, which was very interesting to hear because it's this small piece or small community that's kind of like, who does it belong to here or there? And what do we do with it? And who has to pay for it? And then there's this rule of like, if a certain percentage goes against what your rates are, then they don't have to pay it. So then where does it go? Who covers the cost? They still need the service. Where does the waste go? And it's unfair for them to absorb it because it turns into millions of dollars. But then what if they just put their hands up and walk away? Is there legal issues that they run into there because they throw their hands up and say, we're done? So that was interesting to hear and to hear the conversation as they went around the table. They also talked about, in about 10 years, their facility will be full. So what happens then? So they put that on future agenda items and they will be addressing that, I'm assuming, in the next, I don't know, upcoming meetings. But just overall, interesting to hear about their contracts and budgets. And I heard someone had recently toured the facility and how great it was. So that would maybe be kind of cool thing to, to do as a council member, to just go see their facility. The staff and everyone there was great. Oh, they are also hiring for a new general manager, if anybody's interested. That recruitment closes April 28th and the brochure has been made public for that. But thank you for calling on me to cover for you. It was just a great learning experience for me and opened my eyes just a little bit more to another piece that helps our city run the way that it does. So that's it. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mayor. On Wednesday the 3rd, myself, the city manager and some staff members went to COMSAT, which is a communication satellite location just north of the city. If you drive towards Second Park, look over to the right, you'll see a, an array of satellites. And it was very interesting, the technology they have. And not only that, but their own infrastructure, because they have to be self-contained, because as you know, satellites are our world. And I asked a question about, you know, safety and, and, you know, attacks. And they said, quite frankly, just like, like in everyday technology, their biggest threat is cyber technology. So the, there's no chance probably anybody's going to be storming that place, but they'll do it electronically if they can, and that's why there's safeguards in place. Senior Advisory Committee meets the first Thursday of every month. They still have one position opening, open. They are still going strong. They do have several things going on. Go on our site to see all the events that are happening for seniors, as well as the senior luncheon. And they are planning to come and give a presentation here to the council. On Thursday, the 10th, myself and other council members went to a new business called Rocket Bins in town. Such a great little place in town. And I don't think everybody walked out of there with something in their hands. So please visit. It's up here at 969 East Main. It's right up here, one block up. I attended with other council members the Easter egg hunt. It's also always a great thing to see the community utilize our parks. And Teague Park was no exception. It was well, well, well attended and we saw the Easter bunny. And I also attended with other council members a YARA graduation on Saturday, the 12th. And on Monday, most of the council members attended, all the council members attended the vacancy interviews, which tonight we'll be talking about that in a little bit. And that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. A lot of great work. For those that you don't know, we spend a lot of time behind the scenes. This is hours of our schedules per day to attend and facilitate, represent the city on various issues. It's very important for the community to understand that for the most part, aside from getting a stipend of $600 a month, we spend a lot of our time out in the community. So that's a demonstration of our commitment to the work of being a public servant. For the community, I will be posting tomorrow my mayor's report for the first quarter of 2025. And as mayor, as many of you know, you've all served as mayor with the exception of Ms. Ornelas, there's a lot more that takes place of responsibilities and duties. And so I don't do a monthly reporting anymore. I do a quarterly report for mayor and I'll go back to monthly when I become a council member for the remaining term. Next up, we are moving on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, just real quick, I mean, we've been knee deep in budget, so I haven't had a chance to get out too much. But I had a wonderful weekend away to be part of the wedding of our former city manager and his new bride, in part because my wife was presiding over that wedding. So it was up in Lake Tahoe and it was a nice little getaway for me. But I did have a chance to participate in that COMSAT tour. It's quite fascinating to learn what happens just up here in this facility. It's one of only three in the whole northern hemisphere. And one's on the east coast and the other one's in Ireland. And one's right here and just outside of Santa Paula. So quite fascinating. I'm, I'm bummed I missed the YARA graduation and all the Easter activities, but it was also nice to hear how well represented we were by all of you. And just want to thank the council for participating so much. As you said, Mr. Mayor, the obligations don't start and stop with just attending your meetings here. And I know you make a lot of sacrifices to be part of this great community. So thank you for that. And that's, that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? We're good. Let's go on to the consent item, item 10. 10A, B, C, and D. Is any council member wanting to pull an existing consent item?
Mr. Mayor, I did want to point out, we've placed out at the dais and for the public just some minor additions to the fiscal impact section of your item 10B, B as in boy. Mr. Goodman has provided that in red line. And it's just clarifying some of the account information you'll see on page four in the fiscal impacts, just to make sure that the council's actions are, are clear for our audit and budgeting purposes.
Does the council feel they need to pull the item independently or are you okay with? No? All right. With that said, is there a member that would entertain a motion?
I move to approve the consent count.
Will you be recusing yourself for receipt conflict on item 4?
Sorry, Vice Mayor. Where was that one?
10D.
10D.
Yeah, so I will be recusing myself from voting on item 10D, not because it's legally required, but because I don't want to give the impression, because I live at the Harvest Elmanera, so I'm doing, taking precaution.
Let's see. Mayor, I move approval of consent calendar items 10A, Adam through 10D David, with the red line items that were sent out and made available to the public in the addendum, item 10B.
Great. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any comments, questions, concerns? All right. With that said, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any against? Staying? All right. Motion carries. We are moving on to item 11A. Before we start this process, I did want to start by thanking the community because we had six, 17 applicants for various committees and commissions and boards. And there was extremely diverse group of individuals who stepped up. Thank you, Ms. Latshaw, for facilitating that process and getting those applications in. We had a small window of opportunity, in particular with Measure R. And that's because we're tied to some budget time, a budget timeline. And we want to make sure that we give sufficient time for the committee to be established. And so again, thank you so much, Santa Paula, for taking the effort, making the effort to step up and be of service to your community in these various roles. So we're going to start. Ms. Latshaw?
Thank you, Mayor, council. I just wanted to bring forward after you, your really wonderful interviews on Monday with all of the great community, so that everyone here will be aware and our public of what we are looking for to fill these positions. The council held their applicant, applicant interviews on April 14th to fill the following openings. On Parks and Recreation Commission, we have one vacancy for a three-year term. We also, within the Parks and Recreation, have one youth opening as a, as a renewal. And then on the Mobile Home Rent Review, we have two vacancies for two-year terms. The Measure R Oversight Committee, this will be the first time the committee is going for this. So we'll be needing three vacancies for two-year terms and we'll need two vacancies for four-year terms. So staff is recommending that council appoint applicants to the various commissions. And if you need my help on anything, please let me know.
Great. So I did talk to the city manager about ensuring that we were prepared so that we can be as efficient as possible in terms of creating a tally sheet. And what I like to do is start with the Mobile Home Rent Review Commission, jump to Measure R, and then finish with Parks and Recs. The Mobile Home Rent Commission requires two individuals and there's two individuals. So are we all in favor of those two individuals to take on that role?
My only question is that one of the two applied for the three different positions. So I don't know if we want to consider him for all three positions, or if we feel that this is the one that he would be most suited for, or how we want to handle that. That was the candidate Eric Butler.
Well, if I can just interject, I mean, I think because he did interview for all three positions, we should consider him for all three. He could considerably get appointed to all three, but certainly because he's only, two of two that are applying for the rent review, I think that's a given.
Okay. So I just wanted that clarification that if we chose, he could be appointed to others as well. So to not, that would not exclude him from the others. Thank you.
No, because we interviewed him and there's no rule that says they can't serve on multiple committees. Unless in this case, two appropriation committees, in a sense. So I'd like to see if council member would entertain a motion to approve Eric Butler and Olav Hassel to serve on the Mobile Home Rent Review Commission?
I'll move to appoint both Eric Butler and Olav Hassel, the two applicants for the two-year term on the Home Rent Review Commission.
I'll second.
Great. There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion about their candidacy? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Welcome Eric Butler and Olav Hassel. City Clerk, can you please make sure that we communicate with them as soon as possible? As we know, we have some pending hearing that has to happen before May 19. All right. So Measure R, we did have a lot of candidates. We had a large pool of people, each from each district. We're using districts as, as a filter. In this case, what I like to do, to see how things fall, is go give every, an opportunity for every council member based on each district to select their candidate of choice and see where that tally falls. So if, let's say, four of you select one person for district of the candidates for District One, and that person gets it, then it's a majority of individuals that support that individual candidate. If we do not have a majority, for say, we'll move that district filter to the end and we can debate that individual position. Does that make sense?
Could I counter and make just a friendly
Sure.
suggestion? And that is, I think we've normally, in times past, gone through each council member and talked about the strengths and weaknesses, but that would certainly take a long time. But I think we've all done our individual analysis either that night and/or in the subsequent days following that. And I would suggest that we, since there are two positions for a four-year, we probably want to pick what we consider the strongest, most qualified for those four years and maybe do that first for those two positions. And then I'm sure we'll find out where they fall within the, if they will fall within districts, because it's not mandatory that they be from districts. But I think it's important to first get, you know, the people that we see as the people that rose to the top of the interview process as a long-term position and then move on to the other two or three two-year positions.
Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Sure. So we're just going to go. There's no need to mention anything about, let's just figure out who your choices. And we'll start with District One. So we'll start from Ornelas to Crosswhite. Each one pick their candidate of choice for that district.
Is that the one for the four-year? So I thought that's what we were.
Well, the four-year, we're going to select based on who the five people are that are selected, because then you, from that pool, you can decide who ranks the highest to serve the longest term, which is what the Vice Mayor mentioned.
Does that make sense to what you were proposing?
No, actually, I was proposing to just select the two top regardless of where they're from, because then obviously you might see where two people, depending on, if they're the strongest and we all agree on the two top positions for the, for long terms, then obviously if they're, they're in districts, that would already start the processes to which two districts, if they're both from the same district, then you run into an issue where you're not going to fill all five. But no, my intent was to select based on who we believe is probably the most qualified for the four-year term regardless of districts. In other words, not selecting three districts initially.
So, so the suggestion, my understanding of what the Vice Mayor is saying is that to start with, the first piece would be, we would each pick who we felt were the top two people that we wanted to see on the committee and see how those compare.
Yeah.
So let's just go, let's just go through that for a minute. Let's, let's think about it. The intent of what we said when we were doing this was that we had every intention to select representation from each area, right? And if we didn't find, or if we didn't have pool of candidates that we would select from anybody that applied. Now, I think, I think because we want to get an idea based on who comes out that from, of, of a representative from each area, that would keep us to the intent of what the rule or what the guidance is that we've established. And then if we didn't have somebody in mind, then we would go to select somebody else. I think using it, going that way, provides us each an opportunity to share the strongest candidate based on their district. And it's not always about selecting the strongest candidates, because it could be based on understanding the diversity that we have in the community. You want to be, everyone brings something different to the table. And so what someone you might think has a strength because they have financial background, that is giving them an edge, for say, because of their experience, whereas everyone contributes into Measure R. And so don't we want to have a representative choice versus having one based on pre-selection of your top candidates? Does that make sense?
But I contest the, the fact that our first choice might be based on economics. It may be for other reasons.
And if I, and if I could request to have the language written so we understand exactly what our intent was going into this process.
Do you want to read the application?
Well, actually, yeah, it was in the staff report. Well, actually, actually, yeah, it was in the staff report where it said the council will, you know, attempt to choose, I forget the language.
Can you read it, City Clerk, please?
And I apologize. What part are you wanting me to go ahead and read? The composition of qualifications. The composition of qualifications is 18 years of age, a resident of the city, not a public employee of the city of Santa Paula, not currently serving as a member of the Measure T Oversight Committee, or a committee that recommends use of city funds, and required to submit an annual financial form. And on Section A of the composition also, it's the committee shall consist of five members, one member from each district. However, if no member is appointed, council may choose a member at large. Should a member move to another, excuse me, another district in the city during their term, the member will be allowed to finish out the remainder of their term in their new district.
So the philosophy that you're mentioning is contrary to what our policy says in spirit. Because we have multiple individuals applying for each district. And shouldn't we start there? We might have similar choices. And isn't it best, isn't it best to select based on the majority of that choice? And then if we don't have a majority, then those get polled to the end, and then we can debate the qualifications per, per council member's choice.
Per the vice mayor's suggestion, if we each mention our top two, if there's agreement on any of those, those are the strongest candidates that we feel might be best for the longest term.
Mr. Mayor, could I just contribute?
Sure.
One comment. I think the concern that's being raised here, to Councilmember Cornejo's point, is if you do go through the exercise of selecting the top two strongest, they could both be from the same district. And then you've boxed yourself into a situation where you're not going to have district representation, which is supposed to be your first and foremost criteria, unless there's somebody that council can't agree on from a district. So from a systematic standpoint, I think the mayor's suggesting you look at the districts first, see what the selections are, and if you're not agreeing in one or two of those districts, you'll kind of debate that. And then, once you've come to some consensus, you could say, well, who, from these five now, who are our strongest that deserve to be in the four-year terms? Or who have the qualities that we want for four years because maybe they're strong in finance or economics?
Councilmember Cornejo?
Hadn't there been something mentioned about the terms aligning with the terms that the districts currently had?
There was initially, but we didn't go in that direction. Because we
And actually, the reason was if they moved, they, they could be in a different, different district and still hold their position on, on that.
How I remember.
That, that's the only reason that I think we decided that could complicate it.
And, and Mayor, if I could mention one more thing, a part of this paragraph, it does indicate that you have, you are able to do an at-large. So if you come across one of the districts that no one is really meeting all five liking, you can also pick someone from a different district to fill that position as an at-large. You do have that option.
What I like to do, see where, where it falls, and then we can, that, that's the first wave, and then we can go into who, who wasn't represented, and finding, making a recommendation to fill that spot. But shouldn't we find out first where we're at? Like, it's just a filter. We're just filtering based, candidacy is based on the first criteria being that our intent is to have representation from across the city. So we might have a majority in D1, because three of four of us select somebody that we believe is the most qualified from that district. Can we just, let's just go ahead and try that.
Can I just make one?
Sure.
The one challenge that I'm having is that there's, I think, what I'm trying to figure out is how we move the pieces, the deck chairs on the Titanic, as you will. Like, I'm, I'm trying to, because there's, if we set one thing for one district, but then we choose someone for another place, that might then change who we want in a different one, right? Like, I'm trying to look at the picture altogether of how all of the people work together across the districts, as we're trying to work through that. So that's what I'm trying to figure out, is how all of those work together.
Mr. Mayor, aren't you suggesting just kind of a straw poll from each district to see how that, he's, he's not saying you're making a motion for each district to appoint someone.
Correct. We're just trying to see who, what we can filter based on
Right. You're just seeing where, where the strengths are from each district, and then that discussion that you're talking about can occur.
All right. I guess it's just a challenge, because that's not really how I worked with the names, but I guess we can, if that's what everybody wants to do, we can see how that goes.
Let's just give it a try. Just trust me on this one, okay? And see where things fall. You'd be surprised, because we might have similar intent about infighting a candidate that we believe would be the best fit on the committee. So let's just do the tally sheet. City Clerk, we're going to start with D1, okay? And then, again, this is just a filter. We're not, we have to see what, where it falls and see what we need to debate, and at the end, we can make a decision to make any adjustments as needed. So everyone has their option for D1? Okay, we'll start from Councilmember Ornelas and end with Councilmember Crossway.
And we're only each naming one person?
Just one.
Okay.
Just one. Okay, that's one seat. For D1?
Sitlali Salgado.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I had Sitlali Salgado.
Okay. Councilmember, actually, we're going, we'll go this way and then I'll be the end. I'll give you a minute. Let's see. Councilmember Cornejo?
This one was the hard, one of the hardest districts. That's why I didn't want to start with one.
I didn't want to start with one either.
For the sake of argument, because they're both qualified, I felt Eric Butler.
Okay.
I had them both fairly evenly ranked, so that's why I wanted to see
Pick one.
But that's why I wanted to, but no, but that's
Want me to be the side in tie?
Well, no, but that's why I wanted to see sort of how everything else worked out, because there were three of the districts that were easier for me to figure out than this one, and I just, I felt that, that both of these individuals were well-qualified.
I'll give my choice, and then, you know, don't select one for this first round, and then we can come back to it, okay? My choice was Eric Butler. So it's two and two, right? Let's just keep the tally going. Let's go to D2.
So really, they had to have three and three?
I know they're tough choices, but, you know, we each have to be accountable for those choices.
She didn't give zero votes.
Zero. It's just, just
So, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, you're going to District Two?
No.
I'm going to District Two.
Thank you.
So we'll start again.
Sandra Tadeo.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Turn to the final, I'm going to scribble notes here. Hold on. I had Mary Sue Eastlake.
Okay. I'll just do it this way, so we just, I had Xander Tadeo.
I had Xander Tadeo as well. And I had Mary Sue.
Okay. So we got that tally, City Clerk? Okay. Next one, D3. Ms. Ornelas?
Cheryl Monzon. I got, I butchered it probably.
Vice Mayor?
Cheryl Monzon.
Great. I had Cheryl Monzon as well.
Cheryl Monzon as well.
Cheryl Monzon.
Great. D4? Ms. Ornelas?
I'm, I'm looking. Hold on, where did that one go?
Lina Partida.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I did not have anybody in District Four.
Okay. I had Lina Partida. Ms. Cornejo?
Thank you. That was a difficult decision as well. Lina Partida though.
Okay. It's okay. Yeah, I know, I know.
My mic's not on. One and four were the most challenging.
Just remember, at the end of the day, you know, they're representing the council.
Councilmember Crossway, you did say Lina?
Lina.
D5?
Mary Dynas.
Okay.
Mary Dynas.
Christina Ilar.
Mary Dynas. And Mary Dynas.
Okay. So, could the City Clerk let us know, per district, the majority that the council just did their struggle?
Okay. On District One, we have a split tie of two, two, and one unsure at this time.
Okay, so D1 is still up, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
All right.
District Two, we have three for Xandra Tadeo, and we have two for Mary Sue Eastlake.
Okay. So we have someone that has three. D3?
We have all five for Cheryl Monzon.
Okay. D4?
We have four for Lina Partida, and then one with no count yet.
Okay.
Lina Put-
Choose four.
Was four.
Eastlake.
Vice Mayor Juarez did not select anyone at this time.
Oh, for number four, yeah.
For number four.
But we have four, right? Okay? And D5?
And District Five, we have four for Mary Dynas, and one for Christina Ilar.
Okay, so there's a majority?
Yes.
So it looks like we have a majority on each one, and one didn't vote. So since one didn't vote, can we revisit D1? So we're going to do one more round for D1, and we'll start this way.
Oh, gosh, now I've got to start with me. I'm going to go with Sitlali Salgado.
Okay. Sitlali, we got Ms. Cornejo?
Again, two good candidates. I'll stay with Eric Butler, but two very good candidates.
Okay. I will pick Sitlali.
And, and Mayor, I chose Sitlali as well.
I also chose Sitlali.
Okay. So now we have
I have that off a little bit. I'm sorry.
Raise your hand if you have Sitlali.
And one for Eric.
Four.
All right.
Okay. But again, that, that, both of the, we had two candidates in that district, and they were both equally qualified, and so it was very challenging.
The only reason, the, the only reason I didn't say Eric was because of what he spoke about during his interview. I thought he'd be good on the Parks and Rec Commission. But that's not what we're talking about right now.
No, we're not. So
I'm just saying.
So based on this initial filtering process, it looks like we have Sitlali, majority D1. We have Xander Tadeo, D2. We have Cheryl Monzon, D3. We have Lina Partida, D4. And D5, we have
Mary Dynas.
Mary Dynas. Who is number two, Mayor? Xander Tadeo.
Got it.
Is the council happy with, content with that choice of five, knowing that we've done two rounds?
For the sake of debate only, because we felt we had such two strong candidates in District One, it would be our prerogative to switch and take one out of another district if we felt that district were weak. And I just only bring that up because we have that option, but I'm not advocating for it. I'm just bringing that up as, as, if we feel like someone really should be on this committee, that's, we have that choice, so.
Thank you for sharing that, and for trusting the process.
And Mayor, I want to reiterate that, and I don't know how Councilmember Crossway feels, but this was a very tough decision as usual, because there's a lot of qualified people. And not only that, there was a lot of people with a lot of passion in their thoughts and their actions along the way, and I'm sure they'd show that same sense of dedication. But overall, you know, you got to make a decision, and it's a tough one. And so I, as we were interviewing, I made a rating scale as we were going along, so I could remember what they said, when they said it, so I can refer back to it. But at the end of the day, I go with the majority, and I think anybody that interviewed has the potential to do a fantastic job, and I think it's just tremendous that we had that many people. Because I remember Jonathan Roy said, "It was going to be difficult to get people to apply," and I said, "I don't think so." So anyway, thanks to everybody who applied, and congratulations to those that won.
I do want to mention that I had a, a scale, and I rated, and I trusted my top number, and there was like two districts that had, they were off by like one point. So I didn't want to second-guess myself, and I just had to go with what I felt was the individual that would, yeah. Yes.
And just to reiterate, I mean, there were, you know, every, I think even, we would probably all say, like, even if the one, you know, we put up one person, but even if our one person wasn't the one that we ended up with, I think we would all say that they were on our list of people we were considering, because there were multiple people across the districts that I think would have done a fantastic job. And so it was just, it was really challenging to try to narrow down when you have that many, just, we had a whole, what was it, 16, 17?
17 applicants, 16 interviewees.
For five, you know, spots, and so it was a really challenging, and they all, even the ones that are on this list, like, they all brought different gifts and skills and talents and passions, and, and so it was, it was very challenging to really narrow down to where we ended up.
And we do have other opportunities that are always, we're always in need, so this gives our, our City Clerk a pool of candidates that we could potentially reach out to when there's a position, isn't there, we have one on
Seniors has one open. Parks and Rec will be filled, but we're going to have one youth, which doesn't fit this category, but
So we do have We have another opportunity that's available that's going to be announced soon, and we are looking for someone for the senior advisory, so there's always opportunity. So if you didn't get it this round, please don't give up. There's, trust me, there's always opportunities to get involved. Yeah.
I just want to say how inspiring it is to hear people come and apply and, and share their passion and their love for our city. And, and I, I would have to say that if truly anyone on this list were on that committee, I would have been happy. It, it really is just very difficult to make a choice and to think through, you know, what they'll have to go through on a committee and how to serve and all of that, and, but I just would like to express gratitude for everyone who applies and hope they keep coming to apply for other positions. It's not the only one, and this one's only going to meet a few times, so there are many opportunities to be involved, and I just wanted to mention that, that please not to take it as a negative if you weren't selected. You know, one district had six people applying, another had five, and many good choices. And so just want to make sure people understand that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. With that said, I want to thank the council for just going with me on this one and using the filter as our first wave of straw polling.
So, I was going to say, so are we gonna, oh, yeah, we got to figure out two and four before we can
So let's go into conversations about that, that two and four years. On the application, did we indicate if there was a preferred interest from any of the candidates, whether it was two or four? Okay. So maybe on the future application Okay, so maybe on the future applications, let's try to see if we can put a little box check mark, that would help us out some. And then for, so for right now, are the recommendations for the four year? How many four years we have?
Two, and Mayor, Cheryl Monzon got a unanimous five, I think she's a good candidate for the four year.
That's great. Who got the most, can we do that tally?
Mary Dynas. Mary Dynas and Sitlali. He's got four. I would advocate for Mary Dynas because of her financial background, she, she's, she does accounting. Yeah, and she would be four year, I would agree with that, but I would suggest Mary Dynas as the other with a financial background.
I'm okay with that.
But I-
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that too.
So, let's, so what we'll do is, we'll, there'll be a motion to appoint these individuals, okay? And it'll specify that Cheryl Monzon and Mary Dynas will serve four year, and, so you got it ready?
I'll, I'll make them, I think I get all their names, I only have first names written down in front of me, but I would move that we appoint Cheryl Monzon and Mary Dynas for four-year terms, and Xandra Tadeo, Linda Partida, and Sitlali Salgado for the two-year terms.
Great, there's a motion, is there a second?
I will second it.
All right, any other comments before we move on to the next one? No? We have everything, Ms. Nacho, we're good?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay, all's in favor, say.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Yay. All right, so, let's, let's go to the last one, the Parks and Recs. So, let's just do one round, it's only one position, right? Yeah, because Cassidy is just a renewal.
Well, we have to still vote on her, though. Yes, please.
With your motion, you should appoint her as, for another year as youth.
So let's just do the same process, just each go around, give us your selection regarding the two candidates. And so, we're gonna start with Ms. Lacy Cornejo.
This is a really hard one as well, but I will say Eric Butler.
Okay, Ms. Crosswhite?
I mean, I could live with either of them, but I had Maria Laura Cordova.
I will, I'm going with Maria Laura Cordova, and then you guys finish it up.
Mayor, I would also like to see Maria Laura Cordova.
I already gave mine, but Eric Butler.
Okay, so what's the tally?
Three-two, Maria.
We have three-two with Eric Butler. I'm sorry, with Maria.
They were both fantastic.
The direct thing is that Eric's on mobile and measure R, so that's, we, you know?
Not measure R.
Not measure R.
Not measure R, sorry. Mobile home. He made one of the three.
He made one of the three.
Director Barnes, did you say that there would be another opening on Parks and Rec coming up soon, pretty soon?
We have a youth seat.
Oh, youth seat, okay, never mind, okay, thank you.
All right, so, would someone entertain a motion, including Cassidy? You wanna do it?
I'll make a motion to-
Appoint.
Appoint Maria Lara Cordova and Cassidy Straits for the Parks and Recreation Commission.
I would second that, Mayor.
There's a motion, there's a second, do we need clarification on the motion? Or would it suffice?
Did I have to say the three-year term?
Because Cassidy is not-
Because Cassidy is a youth.
Just as the youth. Just the youth is fine, and for the regular.
So I'd make a motion for Cassidy Straits as the youth representative, and Maria Lara Cordova as a regular-
Three-year term.
Three-year term for the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Cool.
And I'd second that.
Okay, great. Discussion, we're good, all's in favor, say aye.
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 All right, welcome aboard, thank you very much for that process, and we are moving on to the next agenda item. Chief. Yes, one woman chief.
On the mobile, I believe you did vote for Eric Butler, but I don't-
Eric Butler and Olaf Hassel.
But I don't think you did an actual-
Oh, did we do a motion?
Vote for it, did you?
I noticed that they appointed both of them.
That is, if you could just make the actual motion on that, I think we discussed it, and that's who had the higher numbers.
Do you want to do it again? Do it again, just for the record.
All right, going back to the Mobile Home Rec Review Commission, I move to appoint Eric Butler, as well as Olaf Hassel, for the two two-year terms.
Second.
All right, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Great, motion carries. All right, Chief Aguilar, it's all yours.
All right, good evening once again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and our viewing audience. Staff, in this report, staff recommends your council's review of the Police Department's annual military equipment report and approve of the military equipment funding, acquisition, and use policy as required by Government Code 7072, or otherwise known as Assembly Bill 481. And also, we knew the previous ordinance 1315. Just a bit of background on this, on September 30th, 2021, California Governor Newsom approved Assembly Bill 481 requiring law enforcement agencies applicable, applicable governing body, the City Council, to adopt the military equipment use policy and implement it by ordinance. On April 20, 2022, the City Council adopted ordinance 1315, which is Exhibit A in the report, adopting a military equipment use policy for the Police Department pursuant to AB 481, which is Exhibit B in the report. In reviewing analysis, on September 30th, 2021, Governor Newsom signed a series of policing reform legislative items into law. These laws were aimed at increasing police transparency, and Assembly Bill 481 in particular requires law enforcement agencies to adopt a military equipment use policy by legislative body ordinance prior to taking certain actions relating to the funding, acquisition, or use of military equipment as defined by the law. Santa Paula Police Department Policy Number 705 governing military equipment is included here in the report, as I had stated, and was adopted by ordinance number 1315 on April 20th, 2022. Under Assembly Bill 481, the Police Department must submit an annual military equipment report, it's Exhibit C in this report tonight. The annual inventory report for each type of military equipment used within one year of approval and annually thereafter. The report must include the following, a summary of how the military equipment was used and the purpose of its use. Number two, a summary of any complaints or concerns received concerning the military equipment. Number three, the results of any internal audits, any information about violations of the military equipment use policy, and any actions taken in response. Number four, the total annual cost for each type of military equipment, including acquisition, personnel, training, transportation, maintenance, storage, upgrade, and other ongoing costs, and from what source funds will be provided for the military equipment in the calendar year following submission of the annual military equipment report. Number five, the quantity possessed for each type of military equipment. And number six, if the law enforcement agency intends to acquire additional military equipment in the next year, the quantity sought for each type of military equipment. The equipment is categorized by fifteen of each of those categories, they were established by Assembly Bill 481, and that is also in the report. For the purposes of this presentation this evening, I'll have a PowerPoint shortly here to go through, and our equipment that we currently possess is under the following categories, category two, category five, category seven, category nine, category 10, category 11, and category 12. Based on the annual inventory report, the City Council is required to review the policy at least annually and vote on whether to renew the ordinance at a regular meeting. In accordance with the Government Code Section 707-1 Subsection C, the ordinance and policy have been agendized as an open session item at a regular meeting, and public comment must be taken. In deciding whether to renew the ordinance, the Council shall determine whether each type of military equipment identified in the annual inventory report has complied with the standards set forth in the Government Code 707-1 Subsection D Subsection 1. If the City Council cannot make such a determination, it shall either disapprove renewal of the authorization for that type of equipment, or require modifications to the policy in a manner to resolve the lack of compliance. The Police Department has determined that the standards for renewal have been met, and recommends the Council concurrence with this determination. Staff will discuss, will discuss satisfaction of those standards in more detail at the time the ordinance and policy are considered for renewal. So as we move forward here, I'll go through the PowerPoint, just in review, just trying to make this a little bit simpler. The inventory is quite large on the Excel table spreadsheet, and at the end, I will review that specifically and try to get that on the screen for you. So the background, on September 30th, 2021, AB 41 was approved, it requires the Council to adopt military equipment use policy and adopt the ordinance. On April 6, 2022, Santa Paula Council, City Council introduced ordinance 1315, adopting a military equipment policy for the Police Department, and Santa Paula Police Department Policy Number 705 outlines military equipment. The process that has continued to date, in accordance with Assembly Bill 481, the policy is added to the agenda as an open session item at a regular meeting of the City Council, and public comment on the item will be allowed in accordance with the Brown Act. This ordinance shall be reviewed by the City Council at least annually, and based on annual military equipment report, that must be submitted to the City Council pursuant to Assembly Bill 481. The City Council shall determine whether each type of military equipment identified in the report has complied with the standards for continued approval. The meeting purpose, under authority of Government Code 707-1 Subsection D Subsection 1, requirement of the City Council to make determinations for each military equipment listed. Section A, the military equipment is necessary because there is no reasonable alternative that can achieve the same objective of officer and civilian safety. And Section B, the proposed military equipment use policy will safeguard the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, civil liberties. Section C, if purchasing the equipment, the equipment is reasonably cost-effective compared to available alternatives that can achieve the same objective of officer and civilian safety. And Section D, prior military equipment use complied with military equipment use policy that was in effect at the time, or if prior uses did not comply with the accompanying military use policy, corrective action has been taken to remedy nonconforming uses and ensure future compliance. Moving forward, if the City Council cannot make such a determination, it shall either disapprove a renewal of the authorization for that type of equipment, or require modifications to the policy in a manner to resolve any lack of compliance. So I know there's small print up here, but as I have, we've explained, there are fifteen categories, and the categories in bold are the categories that we have equipment under. Just so you see the screen and see how many categories we have that apply to our inventory. It is recommended, as I said before, the City Council review the Police Department's annual military equipment report and renew ordinance 1315, approving the military equipment funding, acquisition, and use policy as required by the Government Code 707-2 or Assembly Bill 481. The strategic plan for this equipment, the item supports the City Council's goal of creating an environment within the city in which our residents feel safe, and which promotes the city as a location of choice for living, working, visiting, and recreating, identified in Section E, public safety and emergency preparedness of the two-year strategic plan, and is in accordance with objective work towards the execution and implementation of the strategic plan. The new unfunded mandates will place new obligations on staff and add costs for publication of the annual report, but no other direct fiscal impacts are associated with this. At this time, I would like to see if we can get the inventory report on the screen on the Excel spreadsheet. And there are a couple of edits that I want to bring to your attention. Amongst all the information that we put in that particular report, there are a couple of areas I wanted to make you aware of the change. Sure. If not, I can go verbally through it and through the category, so see if we-
I have the full agenda up there, so it is bringing up that.
Oh, okay.
To kind of slide it back and forth if there's an area-
There's-
Let me try to make it larger for you.
Okay, there's just two areas I just wanted to make a comment on that had, had some changes to this inventory. Yeah, if you can go the upper left, go over the upper left corner to the category number two. There it is, okay, so where it says armored vehicle and quantity two, we have made a change in that, we had two of these particular armored vehicles. We released one of those vehicles to Blythe Police Department through the Law Enforcement Support Office, which is a federal process, and so now we only have one of those vehicles. Otherwise known as an MRAP. Moving over four more columns, category 12, just moved to the right, there you go, okay, stop right there. If you see category 12 kind of right in the center, there's a, it says CS Chemical Agent, and there's nothing there, there is an error there, we meant to place obviously what type of equipment it is. And that particular column is a Defense Technologies forty-millimeter short-range tear gas chemical agent, which is also used for tactical situations. If you scroll over some more to the right. Keep going. Keep going, and you can stop there, please. Thank you, Clerk. So category 10, there's two category 10 entries on the left there, middle of the screen, the forty-millimeter launcher. Category nine, the patrol rifles to the left, and category 10 to the right, the forty-millimeter kinetic energy projectiles. So out of all the equipment we have in our inventory, because we do not have tactical special response teams, SWAT teams, tactical teams, we are not using any of that equipment. The only equipment we are currently using are the patrol rifles, which are the AR-15 rifles, the forty-millimeter launcher, and its ammunition, which is the forty-millimeter kinetic energy projectile. Those are, in addition to the less lethal, those are less lethal operations, used very similar to the less lethal shotgun we have. And if you scroll back left to the second entry, category five, all the way to the left.
Can I ask you a quick question, Chief?
Yes.
You mentioned that, you know, the equipment is available, we don't have a team, but is there anybody qualified to deploy the equipment?
Yes, we have two that are qualified to deploy the equipment.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so category five, where it says mobile command post vehicle, we have that vehicle right now, and it's use, it's, it's priority use is to respond to critical incidents and act as a mobile command post. Obviously, right now, it's being used as our patrol briefing room, because we're getting ready to move back into the station, but we've used that for the last eight months, we've definitely got our use out of it, and it works tremendously well with the, all the IT and the, and the radios and everything that it's equipped with. Those are the only explanations I wanted to make clear tonight. With that, I will be happy to take any questions before your action.
Questions? Go for it.
Yeah, just one question, so you said we currently only have two individuals that are trained on any of the equipment beyond those three categories that you mentioned. Are you planning to have others trained, so that if there was need for some sort of a tactical response, there would be-
a tactical response, there would be others that were trained on those, or what's the plan?
Thank you, Councilmember Crosswhite. Yes, so as we move forward, and included in our strategic plan, our tactical program includes that, to declare and send officers to training, get them not only to complete the training, whether it be a SWAT school, special response team, but also fill those vacancies to be able to operate those pieces of equipment.
All right, any other questions for the Chief before there's a motion to accept?
Just a comment. I'm young enough to remember February 28, 1997, which is the North Hollywood shootout, and that's when a lot of police agencies found out they were way undergunned, underpowered. And that's when the agencies started to make their, their teams. That's when we started ours. And our first armored vehicle was donated by John Casada from Armored Transport. It was an old armored truck, but it served its purpose. And then, of course, now that you have the MRAP. So I'm an advocate, as I have been for a long time, that, and the ideology that it's better to have it, not need it, than need it and not have it. So I certainly would support this, this continuation of this program.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Just to assist council, the motion would be to, council's already reviewed the report, and so the motion would be to approve the military equipment funding acquisition and use policy, and then second, to renew ordinance 1315. Look in the staff report.
So I move to approve the military equipment funding acquisition and use policy for Santa Paula as required, what does it say? Oh, as required by Government Code 7072, AB 481, and renew ordinance 1315.
And I'll sec... Go. Chief. Correjo? Got it.
Hey, quit.
Quit.
Bingo, let's go. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you so much, Chief. All right, Mr. Singer, future agenda items. Anything before we go back to closed session?
Just very quickly, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we are faced with a little bit of a dilemma in that two of our council members now will not be present for the mid-May meeting. I will do my best to try and keep that agenda on the lighter side, and we'll try and move things up to May 7th if necessary, or to June if we can't meet that deadline. I did want to point out that we'll convene the council on May 7th for a review of your procedural guidelines, and the city attorney and I will work to get those out to you next week, especially for Ms. Ornellis, Councilwoman Ornellis, since this will be her first time kind of getting to know them. And as we approach that date, which is still three weeks from now, to the extent that you have ideas or comments or edits that you're looking to make, you know, you'll, we want to get this in your hands ahead of time so you can start to prepare that. There are a couple of things I think the city attorney and I will also bring to your attention that might be worth looking at. And then we'll also, just for the public's sake, be convening council more often than normal between now and the end of June for various things, including possibly some budget workshops, but also a lot of closed sessions around labor negotiations. That's all I have.
All right, then, thank you so much for joining us this evening. We're going to convene to a closed session. Have a good night.